A lot of fun in a short period of time.
Exactly.
To call this meeting in order, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of meetings held on November 27th and December 6th, please? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Any persons wishing to address the board, Bev? No, thank you. Can I get approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Right, Deanne, good news report.
Good evening, as you probably are all experiencing yourself right now, it's easy to get caught up in the hustle and bustle of December. There are lots of things going on, presents to buy, holiday gatherings to attend, that type of thing, and lots of things on the to-do list. But our students over at Roosevelt High School have taken some time to remind themselves and to remind all of us why it's important to slow down and put others' needs before our own. And Michelle Jensen is a student council advisor over at Roosevelt. She's here with her son, who is joining us as well. Shout out to you. Yeah. And two of her students who are going to tell us about a culture of caring they're really working on over at Roosevelt High School, and some really exciting things that they have been able to help out with in our community. So I will invite Jack and Bailey from Roosevelt.
Hello, so as she said, my name is Jack. I'm a junior at Roosevelt High School and I'm the president-elect of our student council.
Alright, I'm Bailey and I'm also a junior and I'm just a junior representative.
Yeah, so RHS Cares Week is an effort by the entire Roosevelt student body to come together to benefit those in our community and in our school through a homecoming week, like a homecoming-style week, that's focused on giving rather than spirit. So for Monday...
For Monday, we had our Make a Difference Monday, and we had a student at Roosevelt who had ties to an orphanage in Ethiopia. So we worked with her and the orphanage to help bring some holiday cheer to the kids over there. So we had our ad rooms somewhat adopt a student and they donated and gathered stuff to give to them. So we'd give the ad rooms a list of things that they wanted, or there's clothing sizes and things like that. There were 21 kids that were adopted and all the necessities and games that we raised will be sent to Ethiopia at the end of this year.
We got toasty on Tuesday as we came together in our ad rooms to tie over 50 fleece blankets that'll be donated to Project Warm-Up and students at Roosevelt to help them stay warmer in these cold winters that we have here in Sioux Falls.
We also wanted to raise some awareness, so Wednesday was Pediatric Cancer Awareness Wednesday. So we had hundreds of games and toys donated to the Sanford Castle Treasure Chest and we helped fill that up for the kids who have to be there over the holidays.
We brought the giving a little closer to home on Thursday with hats off to supporting the RHS Food Pantry. We had each student bring two non-precious food items or $2 to donate to the RHS Food Pantry, which allowed them to get a sticker so they could wear a hat for the day. We were going to use those to fill our food pantry. We filled five barrels with the food and collected a lot of money, so also work with gift cards for the necessities that are needed so you can tip our hats to helping one another.
We kicked up our caring on Friday by donating gently-used soccer balls for a group of nursing students from Augustana, who will deliver those to Ecuador. And then also during ad room, we wrote letters to Santa, and Macy's donated $2 for each letter to the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
As a school, we wrote about 1,500, so that's around $3,000 there, if you're doing a little quick math. We are overwhelmed each year by the outpouring of generosity that our school provides in this RHS Cares Week to help us truly show we are Roosevelt, we are one. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, it's just incredible.
Thank you.
Excitement, I loved the way you explained everything, that was awesome.
Thank you.
I think when you do things that are creative, people are more engaged and more likely to participate. So very nice job of coming up with some catchy phrases and engaging the students so that they feel like they can really give back to not just our community, but places overseas and other countries as well.
Yeah, we want the week to be engaging, like a homecoming week, so that people see it as something that they can be involved in, not just like a student council activity.
Very nice. It's awesome to do it during the holiday season, to remind people what it's really about, and hats off to your counselor to helping organize, and I'm sure the students did a lot of it too, but to help keep it on task, so thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, I did not see any conflicts of interest this week. Okay, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Alright, and then moving on to supplemental consent agenda, items 9A, 1, and 2. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion passes with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Nicholson. On to the reports of the superintendent.
Okay, the first report tonight is actually a public hearing. We'll ask Becky Dorman, our Director of Human Resources, to come up and present the information for the hearing.
Good evening and thank you. I am here to request of the Sioux Falls School District to apply for waivers from the South Dakota Administrative Rules concerning teacher certification at the elementary level for Spanish immersion teachers. This request is the culmination of the district's collaboration with the South Dakota Department of Education in determining the routes for Spanish immersion teachers with international credentials to reach full state certification to teach at the elementary level under the new certification rules that went into effect on July 1st. This waiver request is necessary due to the difficulty in recruiting native or native-like Spanish-speaking educators who are traditionally certified to teach at the elementary level by the South Dakota Department of Education. To date, the district has hired nearly all Spanish immersion teachers with bachelor's or master's degrees earned outside of the United States. In some cases, these international candidates have completed education or alternative certification programs for grade spans beyond the elementary level. In short, this waiver process is required to add early childhood, kindergarten through 4th grade, or 5th through 8th grade endorsements to the teaching license of these Spanish immersion teachers. Thank you for your consideration. Please acknowledge the public hearing and authorize administration to proceed with waiver applications for these staff. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Becky?
Could you briefly just maybe tell how difficult it is to get teachers for that, for the audience?
Certainly. As it's probably no surprise to any of us here, we don't have a whole lot of educators in the Sioux Falls area or even surrounding states that are native or native-like Spanish speakers. So we do have to recruit from outside our own borders, or sometimes we are fortunate, we get people from other parts of the U.S., but they originate from outside of the U.S. So we most often have to depend on either teacher exchange visas or work visas to bring these staff here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, the first section where it's talking about the waivers that we're requesting, are we saying that teachers would have this experience or this degree from their home country, but not from South Dakota? I just want to make sure I'm understanding exactly what we're requesting.
Sure. What happens is with international transcripts or international teaching degrees, they don't always line up with what South Dakota has. So in some situations, like if you're prepared to be a teacher in another country, you can teach K-12. So when your certificate is evaluated here in South Dakota, you have a K-12 endorsement, but you can't add an elementary teaching credential to a K-12 endorsement. So we would need a waiver to add and authorize that teacher to teach at the elementary level because they have a K-12 endorsement versus just an elementary endorsement.
So these teachers would have, they would have K-12, like they would be certified, like a certified teacher, they have an education background. It's not just somebody that went to school for biology, but now is teaching. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. There's two routes there. You have people that come to us with education, like I went to college to be a teacher, educators. And then there's another route allowed by the state of South Dakota for Spanish immersion and all teachers, and that's alternative certification. So we do have people that come to us with other degrees, but do have some training and experience at the elementary level, and there is a route for them to be fully state-certified.
And so are we requesting a waiver on that route as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Not dissimilar than from the waivers that we request for high-need areas like special ed, that we recently had one for, correct?
That is correct. And prior to the rule changes in 2017, we also had a Spanish immersion waiver that requested the same thing. We just had to go through it now that the rules changed and make ours, our waivers match up to the new rules.
Right.
We've had this in effect since we started the Spanish immersion program, essentially.
Right, I think in year number two, we realized that we needed something different.
But we just had to be in compliance with the change in the state rules. We have to ask for it again.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Alright, well, I will open this up to a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come and speak on this topic. Seeing no people coming up, we'll close the hearing and acknowledge the report, and we will go ahead and proceed with the waivers. Thank you. Thank you.
We don't need a motion.
Motion. You said we didn't need a motion.
Acknowledge.
To acknowledge, okay.
I move to acknowledge.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the public hearing and to approve the waiver application?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Thank you. Our second report of the evening is a report on Every Student Succeeds Act. It's a new, the new federal guidelines that we have. The report tonight will come to you from our new Director of Research, Innovation, and Accountability, Doug Morrison.
Good evening, everybody. As you're aware, the successor to No Child Left Behind is the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so, understanding that there's new requirements under that, the state has submitted a plan to the federal government. That was a culmination of a lot of public input and research that was done on their part. That was submitted on September 15th of 2017, and they're still waiting approval. But I thought I would take you through the elements of the accountability piece, which is really going to be the changes to the school report cards that we are used to seeing. The essence of the plan really deals with four components, if you think about it. It's students enter 4th grade reading proficient. 9th grade, they enter proficient in math. And then there's an element that has to do with academic success of Native Americans, no different than it has been before. And then that students graduate really ready for post-secondary or workforce. So if you look at through the detailed document of what was submitted to the federal government, there's a lot of discussion around workforce development and a lot of things that we've seen already that are coming out of up here as far as internships, apprenticeships, things of that nature. So as far as the required assessments, there'll be no changes in that. You can see Smarter Balance is still the test will be administered, grade 3 through 11, on both the ELA and math side, and then the, in 3 grades, grade 5, 8, and 11, on the science side will be the Dakota Science Test. So no changes from an assessment standpoint. Looking at the school performance index for, we'll look at elementary and middle schools here. Really, the only change here is that what will be introduced this next year is a component related to English language learners. And so what will happen is there'll be, which I'll talk about in a minute, there'll be a component related to that that will count for 10%. And attendance will move from counting on the index from 20% to 10%. So that's the major change on the elementary and middle school level. The other components would stay the same. At the high school level, you can see at the bottom there, you'll see the English language indicator will be worth 10%. And then you'll see a 2.5% decrease to the four-year cohort graduation rate, 2.5% to the high school completion rate, and then 5% to the career in readiness. So in both cases, the English language indicator becoming an integral part of the scorecard. If you have a cohort of 10 or more, which obviously we do for the last three years, so that becomes a major component. Student achievement, really what, it will still be on the Smarter Balance test. If you score at a level 3 or 4, you'll be considered proficient. Except this year, what they're going to be looking at is some element, if you can get more kids into the 4 category, you may get some bonus points. So we'll be interested to see how that goes, but that's one change that they're considering. But it'll still be level 3 and 4 on the Smarter Balance will be considered proficient. This is where we get into the English language learner component of it, and you can see that the Access 2.0 assessment, which I think Demi has come up and talked about before, will become the major assessment tool for our ELL kids. And basically, the state will have a curve that they think you should be able to exit it, depending on the score that you come in at. So if you look at that, here's basically what it says. If you come in at level 1 or 2, that you'll have five years that you should be able to exit to become to proficiency. If you come in at a level 3 or 4, it takes, it should take you less time. So the state will basically build curves for those, and then you'll, then they will measure our students based on those curves, and that will be determined how we come out on our English language learner indicator on our report card. Attendance, interesting change. I think on a national basis, most states use a 90% indicator. South Dakota's always used a 94%. And so they'll be moving from a, to more of the national standard. So the, it will move from 94% to 90%. That will be, so every kid will be expected to attend 90% versus 94, I think, as a school district. Everything we have is based on 10 days. We'd still internally like to measure ourselves to that 94% standard. And then the other thing that they'll change is that it used to be that as long as a student was within your school for 14 days, you would be measured on the attendance indicator. Now, only your school will only be measured for a student who is in there from October 1 to May 1, which is considered a full year. So much less stringent on the attendance side, I'm not sure why, considering they would tell you, you know, that of all the correlation to academic achievement, of all the indicators they have, attendance is a major indicator there. So, but I think they're trying to go more towards the national norm. They will also start, they will also add some more subcomponents, at least for informational purposes. So we will start to see cohort, as long as they meet a certain size, indicators on homeless, migrant, foster kids, and kids, and military-connected kids. So the scorecard will expand more so than what it is now. They will be moving to a little different designation on the bottom 5% of the schools that, so the state will run all the SPI indicators, and then the schools that are in the bottom 5% will become comprehensive support schools. So not much change except the title. We're used to seeing focus and priority schools. Now they'll become comprehensive support, and then the other one is a targeted support school. So not much change there, except in the title. I think what you, but I don't think what we'll see as the designations as far as progressing, exemplary, and those other categories, I think they're really running the SPI indexes so they can identify the bottom 5%, but they have realized that every school board in the state may think that they're, they value something else, you know, different components on the scorecard. So there'll be less ranking subcomponents within that, but definitely still targeting to identify the bottom schools and then holding the districts accountable to move them out of those categories. You recall this last year, we were able to move LBA out of their category, and so that was a big win for the district. And finally, the report cards are being redesigned. The whole thing is to really provide the, your constituents, your parents, your community with as much information as you can. That's really the federal directive. So our scorecards, our district report cards will expand to include now things like civil rights data, Perkins data, financial reporting, college going rates, you know, things that we've seen on different reports that we brought to you, but they'll now be brought into the district report card and the school report cards to the extent that they can. Dual credit, APD data, teacher equity data, which is a way of looking at, in your title schools, do you have the same types of experience and degrees as you do in your non-title schools? So much more detailed information than what we have today on the report card. So it's still kind of work in progress, but that's kind of what you can expect for this next fall when we get this year's results. And I'll stand by for any questions. Otherwise, we'll keep updating you as we learn more from, as the plan is approved, and if there's any changes that the federal government wanted to see. But this looks to be the direction that the state's going.
When will that date be for the approval, approximately?
Yeah, I would imagine, and you know, it's hard to say these, I would, I would hope in the next several months, but I suppose it just depends if there's anything controversial in there. I think it's basically mapping all the Every Student Succeeds Act guidelines at the federal level to make sure that the state has accounted for all of those in their accountability models. So I don't think there'll be, you know, it really is not much changes in the scorecard other than bringing in the ELL component for the most part, but a lot more data that will be brought into it that we kind of tend to fragment in different reports. So that will be interesting to see. So maybe, you know, Washington High, you can see their ACT results or their AP results, where we kind of bring it to you in a, in a more macro level. So I think you'll see more information like that, I think, as the poll.
Any other questions for Doug? Can I get a motion in a second to acknowledge the report regarding the Every Student Succeeds Act?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, any discussion, any further discussion?
The only, the piece of it that I guess troubles me a little bit is the attendance piece. And that, we, we know, yeah, we, we know from all of the data that we have, that, that we've used as school district, and I'm pretty sure at the state level, that same thing has, has been what has driven some of these decisions. And now to see that drop back from the 94% expectation to 90, that's troubling to me. You know, the ELL piece being integrated in, I think is good. The data is all good, but the attendance, if, if you don't show up, you're not going to succeed, period. And I, it's disturbing to me that that's...
The district will stick with the... Yeah, the district, we, we have made a, you know, concerted effort. We're still, as part of our strategic plan, we said we would move attendance up, and we are holding ourselves to the old standard, because most of our policies are written on 10 days. And for comparative data, we continue to run the data and show all the buildings, their attendance levels at the 94%. And, and if you have a student in your school for 14 days, you're responsible for making them get there. It may not seem fair, but we have in some of our schools as much as 20, 25% mobility, and if nobody's accountable for them, then they fall through the cracks. So we'll continue to be diligent on that.
Which I, I know, I expect, but it's just disappointing to see that, at the state or national level, they don't see that same connectivity.
Any other discussion? Alright, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Okay, our next report is World Language Implementation Report. Comes to us from the Curriculum Services Department, Anne Smith.
Good evening. The world language curriculum was revised, and the new, newly revised curriculum began being implemented last year. So we've completed a full year of implementation. The curriculum is aligned to the National Standards for Language Instruction and South Dakota's World Language standards. The major change in this revised curriculum is an increased focus on speaking and writing the language. In addition, a new district semester test was written for Spanish 1 and 2, and those tests were given for the first time during the 2016-17 school year. At the completion of the school year last year, a survey was sent to the teachers, and teachers reported the following comments. The resources and materials are valuable to them in providing quality lessons. The new materials make the content more relevant for students in today's world. The communication between buildings has improved, and there is more collaboration occurring between teachers. The textbook has online capabilities, and those students who have internet access can access the online version of the textbook from anywhere. With this curriculum, teachers have more materials to choose from for assessments and practice. Their recommendations would be, and this one kind of follows along with that, as you have more materials available to choose from, you need more professional development and ongoing support in making sure that you understand all of those resources that are available to you. So in addition to the professional development, it's valuable to provide teachers with time to collaborate. During this current school year, teachers will be creating common formative assessments for each course. These formative assessments help to monitor student learning to ensure that students are on track. Another component of the world language curriculum is the Foreign Language in Elementary School, or FLESS program, which has been at Rosa Parks. It was implemented during the fall of 2008 at the recommendation of the World Language Study Committee at that time. The committee recommended the FLESS program to benefit those students at Rosa Parks who were not enrolled in the Spanish immersion program. If you'll recall, Spanish immersion was a classroom at Rosa Parks at that time. The FLESS program was also seen as a way of building community between the two programs, which were located in the same building. In 2014, the Rosa Parks FLESS program was extended into Whittier and Patrick Henry Middle Schools, so that students could continue building language skills as they got into middle school. Over time, there has been a decrease in the number of students choosing to continue their FLESS instruction at middle school. In the fall of 2017, only 31... In the fall of 2017, only 31 students, 30% of the students coming up from Rosa Parks, chose to participate in the FLESS pro-time at middle school. Looking at this and recognizing that FLESS was added to Rosa Parks to support non-immersion students, there is limited, and that there is limited student interest in continuing FLESS instruction into middle school, it's recommended that the FLESS program be discontinued. Students currently participating in the middle school FLESS program would continue through the seventh grade.
With that, I would ask that the board would acknowledge the report of the world language curriculum implementation in the FLESS program at Rosa Parks, and I stand by for questions. Any questions for Anne? Okay, thanks, Anne. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the world language implementation report?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seen none. Can I, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay.
Okay, our last report of the evening. I'll ask Mr. Veek, do you, do you want to introduce? I, I should have asked you in advance.
We have with us Dan Schelsky from RSM to take us through the audit. There's a couple of other members of the firm out there too, as well as STI is down there for any questions about STI, and Ken Mulder, the comptroller's out there as well.
I'm Dan Schelsky. Thanks for the introduction. I'm Senior Audit Manager with RSM. I've had the opportunity to serve as the manager of the school district's audit for the past several years. I also have with me John Schulte, who is the audit partner on the engagement, and Jesse Gokenhauer, who has served on the, as the in-charge role for the past couple of years on, on the audit. So we've included a summarized version of the results of the financial reporting highlights and our audit concluding for the year ended June 30, 2017. We do want to note that we did meet separately with the Budget Committee to discuss in depth of the results of those deliverables as well. As it relates to the status of the audit, it is near completion, and we plan to issue the final report over the next couple of weeks. For the financial performance of the district, we'll start by looking at the government-wide statement of net position. So this is an all-encompassing view of the district's financial performance. It includes both the governmental activities and the business-type activities, all combined or consolidated into a single reporting projection. The method of accounting for the government-wide statement of net position is full accrual, so it does include recording the capital assets on the balance sheet and long-term debt payments as liabilities on the balance sheet as well, which differs from some of the fund financial reporting we'll get to here shortly. You can see for the overall government-wide statement of net position, the ending fund balance has remained relatively consistent over the past few years, decreasing 2% to $238 million this year. Of that, about $161 million is invested in capital assets and net of related debt, while $53 million of that in the burgundy color is amounts that are restricted either by laws, for instance, for capital projects, special education, or for the district's proportionate share of the SDS, SDRS pension asset or liability. And the remainder of the balance in yellow, $24 million, is unrestricted. Next, we'll move into the performance of the funds of the district, and starting off with the general fund, fund balance. So this slide and the next several slides will show funds that are on a modified accrual basis of accounting. So for those, payments for capital assets and for debt are generally expensed as incurred, and they're not recorded on the balance sheet of those funds. You can see that overall, the district's general fund balance decreased about 10% or $1.8 million this year, leaving 15.1 ending balance there. Originally, the district planned to use $3 million of fund balance, but ended up using 1.8 as taxes and other local revenue sources, came in higher than budgeted, while supplies expense was under budget, each by about a million respectively. That ending fund balance of $15 million represents about 9% of the general fund's expenditures on an annual basis, and of that, about $5 million is designated for use in next year's Looking at the general fund revenues by source, overall, the general fund revenues increased this year by approximately $18 million or 12%, bringing the total to $164 million. You can see that, and they're in the burgundy color, that most of the increase is with the state sources. Those are up about $17 million. That's primarily related to an increase in state aid that was received during the current year of about $16 million. However, on the next slide, you can see in the general fund expenditures where those amounts were utilized. Overall, expenditures increased in 2017 about $20 million or 13%. And as you can see in the dark purple column, the vast majority of that increase is in salaries and benefits due to increase in a number of employees and also wage adjustments that those employees received. Overall, salaries and benefits increased $16 million. There was also an increase in the purchase services of about $4 million this year related to the payment of busing services from the general fund that had been paid out of the capital outlay fund previously. Next, we have in pie chart form, pie chart format, a summary of the previous two slides, which shows that the primary source of the general fund revenues is the local and taxes and state sources, which collectively make up about 87% of the funding for the general fund. And as you can see, about 85% of that is used for employee salaries and benefits. Move on to the Special Education Fund, which is a major fund for audit purposes, and it's also a governmental fund. The fund balance in that fund decreased about 19% or $1 million this year to around $5 million. The district had planned to use about $1.6 million, but ended up only using $1 million, mostly due to salaries and benefits coming in less than budgeted in that fund. The Special Education Fund revenues and expenditures are shown next. Overall, revenues increased $5 million this year in the Special Education Fund to $41 million. That's due mostly to an increase of state aid of $3.1 million, and also an increase in federal grants that were received this year of $2.7 million. There in the expenditures column, you can see that expenditures increased as well, up 18% or $6 million this year, bringing the ending total to $42 million. Most of the increase is in the salaries and benefits, which is up $5 million in the purple column there, which is due mostly to an increase in the number of sped employees and also the wage adjustments those employees received. The pie charts for the Special Education Fund will demonstrate that local taxes and state aid finance most of the activities in Special Education Fund, collectively making up approximately 79% of the revenue, while most of the expenses, about 84%, are used for employee salary and benefits. Next, we'll look at the capital outlay and related capital project funds. This breaks out those amounts into those that are for capital outlay, capital improvement, hail damage fund, and also the elementary project and middle school project. Collectively, the fund balances in those funds decreased about 30% or $5 million this year, leaving an ending balance of $12.4 million in those funds. And that decrease this year was mostly the result of the district recording expenditures for meeting the needs of its capital improvement plan project. And next summarizes the results of the post-secondary vocational fund. For the results, so STI's activities, the Southeast Technical Institute, is reported in the district's financial statements, and this represents the governmental fund that accounts for most of those activities. One thing that's unique to this fund versus some of the other funds you'll see is that the capital improvements for this fund, or capital improvements for the post-secondary vocational fund generally are financed out of this fund, whereas in other funds, they would likely be financed out of the capital outlay funds. This is also a major fund for audit purposes. The ending fund balance decreased about 24% or $1.7 million. That was a planned reduction of fund balance, as the budget had planned to use $1.9 million of fund balance. Next, we have the food service statement of revenues, expenditures, and net income. You can see the activity in the food service fund has been increasing over the past several years with the increasing enrollment at the district. Revenues increased 5% or $600,000 this year, mainly due to an increase in the number of meals served and to an increase of 20 cents per meal for the paid meal price. Expenses increased about $300,000. The net of those two resulted in a net income to this fund of $453,000 this year. That increase in the fund balance is shown here on the next slide, which leaves about $7.3 million of ending fund balance in the food service fund. Of that, $3.9 million is invested in capital assets, while another $1.1 million is invested in the, or excuse me, restricted for the SDRS pension amounts. That leaves an unrestricted balance of $2.3 million. It should be noted that the Food Service Fund is a proprietary fund of business-type activities, so it is shown on full accrual accounting, so that does include the recording of capital assets and pension liability and other full accrual type items. The Group Health Insurance Fund is an internal service fund of the district that accounts for the district's self-insurance plans for health, dental, and vision. The revenues in this fund include both the employee and employer insurance premiums, while the expenses consist primarily of the payment of medical claims. The expenses increased this year about 8%, while the revenues increased 13%, which generated a net income in this fund of $1.7 million. And that increase in the fund balance of the Group Health Insurance Fund is shown next, leaving the ending balance at $11 million, which is approximately 34% of the annual expenditures for the Group Health Insurance Fund for the year ended June 30, 2017. Next, we have a summary of the required communications that we discussed in detail with the Budget Committee. The district did increase its period of availability for revenue recognition from 60 days to 90 days on its modified accrual governmental fund statement, so it'd impact the general fund and special education fund, the funds of those nature. In addition, for new accounting standards, they adopted GAAP 77, which included some additional disclosures related to property tax abatements. There were two audit adjustments identified during the course of the audit, to reduce, one, to reduce property equipment in the food service fund, and second, to reclassify interest income within the post-secondary vocational fund. There were several uncorrected misstatements that were identified during the course of the audit which were determined to be immaterial to the financial statements, and that related primarily to removing certain accrued payroll liabilities from the payroll withholding agency fund to the funds in which those expenses were originally incurred in, and also to amortizing the deferred outflows related to bond deficits that occurred in 2015. We did not identify any significant or unusual transactions during the course of the audit, and for your reference there, we've included a summary of the significant accounting estimates that were identified during the course of preparing the financial statements. Lastly, we've included a summary of our results of any comments or findings related to internal control over financial reporting or during our review of federal award compliance. As it relates to internal control over financial reporting, we did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control of financial reporting. However, we did identify one significant deficiency related to purchasing card expenditures at the Southeast Technical Institute. As it relates to our review of federal award compliance, we noted a few items related to payroll documentation and control, contract procurement documentation at the Southeast Technical Institute, and also related to the buy-in review of its drug and alcohol abuse program. We did identify a number of other control deficiencies which were separately communicated to management in a written letter. That concludes my prepared presentation comments summarizing the results of the audit. I guess I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
Thanks, Stan. Any questions?
In, with STI's issues, and I've spoken with Rich, and I feel comfortable going forward, we've addressed those, do you feel that the policy they have going forward will take care of those and won't be brought up further in audit issues?
We have reviewed the corrective action plan, and if implemented according to schedule, we don't anticipate there to be future issues.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, seen none. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the audit report for FY '17?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I was just going to say, I sometimes have trouble balancing my own checkbook, so kudos to the people who have to manage the many, many funds and the millions of dollars that come in and out. And I feel like we do a really good job of keeping track of that and spending it responsibly and taking good, good notes and balancing everything. So I appreciate your time and detail and sharing that with us, and I appreciate the people outside of the board who have to manage that on a daily, weekly, hourly, probably sometimes basis. So thank you to, to those of you who are involved in that process.
Yeah, thank you. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, and now can I, a motion?
I move that we go into executive session per South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-23.
All right. Thank you.